Good afternoon, everyone. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. The time is now two past 4:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible of audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gyllenhaals?
Here.
Deputy City Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Turner?
Here.
And Director of Civic Affairs and Marketing Casey Ranigan?
Here.
We have one resolution on the special meeting agenda, Council. It's 11903-2025. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-412. This is to discuss 610 Beach Avenue and Open Space Eastman and Cape Island Baptist Parking Agreement.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
And we have a public portion mayor?
Is anyone here wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we can close public comment and go into closed session.
Time is 4:03.
So did you pull the punch? I ran into Pete on Saturday.
You ran.
I ran.
You ran, yeah. That's great.
I think I ran into you last year and asked you that, and you were like, "Nope, you're not."
Good evening, everyone. We are coming out of a closed session, so I apologize for being a little late. We have to first close out the closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Solicitor, could you give us a quick update on the conversation in closed session?
Yeah, council discussed two items, Cape Island Baptist Church. We have a prior parking agreement with them. We're not going to be taking formal action on that tonight. And council also discussed 610 Beach Avenue and the easement that's associated with that property. I'll give a more general update on that when we get to the regular portion.
Perfect.
But no action on either of those items tonight.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Then we can open our regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. The time is now fifteen past five. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the ready of justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the President of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullick?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillenshaw?
Here.
Deputy City Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Turner?
Here.
And CFO Haney?
Here.
Counsel, any additions or deletions this evening?
Counsel, any deletions or additions?
I am hearing there may be a tabling of a resolution if council would like to deal with that now or at the consent agenda time.
One twenty-one. One twenty-one.
So, 121-03-2025, this is a resolution of the City of Cape May authorizing award of a cooperative contract with Fox Fence for Restoration Services Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System Contract ESCNJ 2425-15.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This is the table.
This is to table indefinitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we need a roll call on that?
We do.
Okay, pardon me. Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Any other additions, deletions, tablings?
Anything else, counsel? No? Okay.
Moving on to updates on business.
Updates on old business. Deputy City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Manager Dietrich apologizes, but he is somewheres that is warm and tropical right now. So you have me. Just want to make note that the manager's presentation and budget intro is scheduled for April 1st. Agenda, all city projects are on track at this time. I know we have a lot going on, but everything with the weather yesterday kind of may have backed us up a day or two, but everything generally is on track. You'll see the contractors back out at City Hall approximately next week doing some work, removing some landscaping and whatnot, and then they'll be back for the mill and pave later this month. But it is open right now. We'll put the barricades out when we think that the public shouldn't be there. CFO Haney is here this evening because I know we have the MAC that's here with us as well for the bond adoption and the resolution as well. And that's all I have for an update, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. City Solicitor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief update on a topic that's probably been in the news and on the minds of residents and council members through emails probably you're receiving. And we discussed it in closed, but I just wanted to give, share some information and brief history of the city's open space easement on the property known as 610 Beach Avenue. Back in the eighties, the city administration undertook an effort to acquire something like forty-two acres along the beachfront and to make sure that they were able to conduct replenishment programs and also that those areas were maintained for open space recreational facilities and for the public. And this lot was part of that effort and did not result in the city acquiring it, although they acquired some other lots. But what they did acquire in agreement with the property owner was a very robust open space easement, which includes, you know, certain restrictions like that the property is going to remain open, undeveloped, and in its natural condition, which is directly from a publicly recorded document that's on record with the county clerk's office, was adopted at a public meeting. And that type of language is not the type of thing that's going to surprise the current property owner. And it is their right to list the property on the market. And the city also retains a right of first refusal for any offer on that lot that comes in. And I shared with council, and I'm happy to share with the public, that we've been, both parties have been in contact. We're both aware of the easement, aware of the rights and obligations that are in there. And the city's not taking any action on that tonight. But we are comfortable with those very robust restrictions that were put in place for the benefit of the public and for the protection of the city and are comfortable with those restrictions. So I don't want to get into a what-about-ism about those restrictions, but I just wanted to, you know, give an outline of that, what the context of it is, and that there is an easement in place for the protection of the public and for the city.
Thank you, City Solicitor. City Council, any updates or old business? No? Okay. On to ordinances for introduction?
Yes, Council, we have 555-2025, an ordinance amending Section 434 of the Cape May City Code to establish limits on city recycling collection and require private collection for amounts exceeding those limits. For introduction this evening.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments on this one?
I do, because our solicitor provided, I think the motion and the second was made on the original. So we want to look at possibly adopting additional language, which is what our solicitor provided.
If, if council would like, I could give a little bit of background as to how we got here.
Perfect.
And invite any other comments as we work through that. But this, some version of this was presented to council a few weeks or months ago and was tabled back to the drawing board. And the drawing board involved a small group, illustrious members of the Department of Public Works, our city manager team, and our council members, Ms. McDade and Mr. Meyer. And we worked to come up with a concept that could work with what we have. The city, we wanted to look at what our capabilities are, because I think we recognize that there is a practice in place about collection, specifically as it pertains to recycling. We're not talking about trash. We're talking about recycling, just to be clear. And practice of collection for both residential and commercial properties has developed over the years, for whatever reason, due to changes. But we have a code section that is inconsistent with that practice right now, and the goal being, let's try and establish something, an update to the code that could reflect what our capacity is to collect. And it looked like the policy direction and goal was not to say, okay, well, our code section- section doesn't provide for collection, so let's cold turkey that. Because we're able to do it. There was some capability to do it. It's not infinite. We can't collect everything, but there is, with our staff and with the materials and equipment that we have, there is some capability to continue that collection. So what we wanted to do and what the group's goal was, and looking at examples from neighboring towns like Wildwood and other towns that are similarly situated and have that seasonal capacity, and, you know, boardwalks, Washington Street Mall, areas that have specific needs during certain times of the year, and to build an ordinance that we could work with. And it may not be perfect, but it might provide a jumping off point for both residential and commercial collection, understanding that there's probably some that would like to see that practice discontinued, and then there's probably others that are on the opposite end of the spectrum of saying, just collect anything that I put out there. Neither of those positions seemed tenable. They both seemed overly extreme. So what we did, in order to make everybody unhappy, is to try and find something in the middle. So if you're unhappy about this, I think that small group did its job. But boots on the ground, what does this mean? So there'll be some limitations on, you know, providing single-family and two-family homes, two 96-gallon cans or equivalent. And we're talking about capacity dimensions, not necessarily weight, but giving people, you know, sort of like when you go to Spirit Airline and you see if you can fit it, your carry-on within that cube, you know, you kind of know what you're working with. That was kind of the inspiration for what we were going for, give people at least some, you know, description or cue as to what they could put at the curb. And then going up to mixed-use properties, you know, the types of properties that might have two residential units up top and maybe a commercial unit on the bottom, or, you know, multi-unit complexes of whatever composition. You know, trying to give some flex for the multi-unit, but also recognizing again that we have this capacity to collect limitation. If we say we're going to collect everything, we got to go out and hire more guys and more trucks and all that, which we're not, we're not there yet. So we're just trying to, talking with the people that are actually doing this work, wanting to get their feedback on what we can reasonably do and still do other things that we need to do. And we got that feedback and took that into account. So we landed on, you know, looking at a per-unit allocation, but not to exceed six. So if you get up, you know, say you have eight units, well, you're going to be stuck with a, you know, six-can limitation, recognizing our capacity to collect. And if you can't comply with that, you know, some people may look at it and think they're on the line or they're well under it, well, okay, then you're going to qualify for the city collection. If you can't meet it, you're just generating too much collection to meet the allocations that are in here, then that's when you go to private collection or a private hauler. But the goal here was to provide some measure of collection, probably not everything that everybody's looking for, but probably more than some would like to give, you know, depending on the situation that they're in. So there's examples in here. I didn't read the ordinance. I was trying to give you just kind of a narrative of how it's going to function. And there were two other things, additions, not in the one that's in the packet that Councilwoman Baldwin just pointed out. And these would be potential additions. And the first of which would be to allow the city manager and the municipal recycling coordinator to have the authority to direct the manner of collection for business owners owning and/or occupying properties within the Washington Street Mall Business Improvement District as set forth in Chapter 505 of the City Code. And that's for purposes of assuring the safety and attractiveness of the district. And the reason you might consider doing that is because the bid is a statutory district. You know, trash collection is one of those purposes that you might have a special assessment in there, and they are assessed in ways that other businesses are not. They collect and administer special assessments under the City Code. And it's a, you know, key part of the commercial beating heart of town, so you might view that as, you want to give the discretion to, you know, specifically manage that collection, whatever it takes to keep that in the condition it needs to be. So that will be a carve-out from these limitations essentially, but it would allow the city manager and recycling coordinator to kind of address that as needed. And then the second addition would be any prop, and this is more of a kind of a FYI, public service announcement, but felt, council felt, may feel it's important to let the public know that, okay, we have these allocations and limitations for curbside collection, but any property owner in the City of Cape May shall also have the ability to bring excess recycling materials for drop-off at the municipal recycling station located at Canning House Lane, no less than five days a week at regular hours to be determined by the city manager. We already do that, but that would, this is part, as part of this process, I think it was important to perhaps highlight that, you know, if you have excess recycling that couldn't be collected at the curb, you want to throw it in the back of your car or truck and drive over there during the hours that they set, you know, that's another opportunity for collection. So those were the two, that was kind of the outline, and then those last two things were the two potential additions. And if counsel would like to do that, I circulated a draft, highlighted, you know, additional language, and that can be included via motion as an amendment.
Okay. Councilwoman Baldwin, do you want to say what your edit is to the draft?
This, we were the only ones that received the draft, and he read it the way it, he read it.
Oh.
Just manner of collection.
Yeah, it's updated. It's already there.
Okay. Do I, do I have a motion to amend the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to amend it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So on the amended ordinance, our solicitor just did a pretty thorough description, but just to go back a little bit further, no one up here or even in our DPW really started this issue. This is being dealt with by every municipality in the country. Basically, what used to happen is China would take our recycling, and I won't get into a whole big thing, okay? But with a trade imbalance, a lot of those empty ships going back to China would actually be filled with our recycling, and that's why it had some value. Unfortunately, those things have changed, and we know that this is kind of going to be changing not just now, but in the future as well. So this certainly won't be the last recycling ordinance, unfortunately, for some of the folks up here. But the change in the market is forcing every municipality to face how we pick up our recycling. If you read the paper, I won't say the local municipality near us, but they're having their issues as well. They're having to do exactly what we're doing, essentially kind of scaling back on how many cans. It can't just be as many cans as you want. So that's what this does. I do highlight to most homeowners that this affects, you're still getting two 96-gallon cans, so that is actually a lot of recycling. So even my house would put out two 96-gallon cans. But, so I think it does provide for a large amount. And locally, this issue was brought to us by our DPW, and I've said this in the past, that other meetings, that I get almost zero complaints from our Department of Public Works who deal with some of the toughest issues that we have in town. And I see you guys doing that on a daily basis. So I know everyone up here at this table takes what they say seriously. And previously, we had seen slides of, okay, this is what we're dealing with, and these are the issues that we're having. The issue with our code is that it says no pickup for commercial properties. We have commercial properties being picked up. And then I have commercial properties asking the mayor, why are they being picked up and we're not being picked up? Well, because the code hasn't been really written well. So I do want to thank Councilman Meyer and Deputy Mayor Maureen McDade for getting this together, and I think getting it as close as we possibly can. And as the solicitor said, I think as close as we possibly can means just about everybody doesn't like it. So that's where we're at, but I think it's probably as close as we can, and I appreciate the hard work that went into it, especially on something that might not be the most popular thing to do, but we're willing to work together and get as close as we can. With that, I just.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I mean, Councilman Meyer and I worked on this, as Mr. Gillenshaw explained, with our representatives from DPW. And there was a lot of back and forth. This is, as everyone has said, this is far from perfect, but I do think that we struck a compromise on being able to move us forward. When we started this, it was at the request of our DPW leadership to say, please help us get somewhere where we have some reasonableness and how we can manage this. And they came open-minded with, you know, we want to be able to continue to provide this service. We just need to do so with the constraints. So I really appreciate the spirit in which we were able to get this done. It is by no means probably perfect, as the mayor has said, but I think it is a wonderful starting point, and we have an opportunity to take a look at things as you do all the time once you start a new process and maybe revisit sort of the structure or the parameters at some point in time. This, since we did not have this on the books, there are commercial properties that may have not had their recycling picked up. Now they will have the opportunity to do so, so we'll have a better understanding of what the real baseline is and how we can service and accommodate. Also, I just wanted to mention, I should have put this out, but Eric and Frank put together something that will be posted on the website, and I'll put these over there for everyone to take. But it's a great sort of educational tool on the recycling program and sort of the different, you know, how materials are picked up, the hours of operation, the holiday schedule, the zones and which days of the week they're picking up. So they spent a lot of time and energy on that, so I want to just thank them for that effort. So thank you, gentlemen, very much, and I'm sure your staff will appreciate us moving forward on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. One thing that isn't in this ordinance, but we definitely want to make sure we do, is looking at this November 1st after the season, take a look and see what worked and what didn't. I have a feeling we'll probably hear from folks well before November 1st and giving us opinions, but we want to hear that. So I think, I'd like to just put in the minutes, because I don't, I won't put it in the ordinance, but we should look at this again on November 1st, just to analyze it, have our DPW come in and, you know, give us their recommendations as well. Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just want to thank everybody as well for spending many hours on this in City Hall, and I think we spent a lot of hours at home, you know, not getting sleep about this, I think, as well. As Mayor and Solicitor said, currently the code is not consistent with our operations, so that's the whole purpose of this. That's objective number one. And as Deputy Mayor said, that we may be picking up more people, that this may benefit instead of having to put it out to bid or, you know, figure out a private hauler for themselves. My goal in supporting this ordinance is to hear people from people that this may not accommodate, which there is a number of them out there. We have a list of about 100 businesses that may need more assistance, whether it's private or public. So we want to make sure, and my goal going into this and supportive of this is, we want to hear from those businesses who may need extra help. The reason for doing so is if we have an idea who needs more pickup, we might be able to come up with a concept plan, a price for that extra pickup. And the goal of that is to, first of all, be affordable to the businesses, but also my goal in this is to reduce truck traffic and noise throughout the town. If the city has an ability to accommodate those people at a certain price, then the city would have more control over the times and locations of pickups throughout the week, which would benefit, you know, our quality of life in the City of Cape May. So going into this, this is the first reading, we definitely want to hear from the public, and not everybody's situation is the same, so there's a lot of unique opportunities to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the amended ordinance, correct?
We have a motion and a second to amend.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to amend. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulock?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulock?
Yes.
Okay, on to ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. We have 552-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Cape May City Code regarding metered parking zones and fees with a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on 552, ordinance 552? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would this stuff that's part of our packet, would that be on the website as well, once we adopt this?
It'll be updated, right? Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulock?
Yes.
Next, we have 553-2025, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the city-owned buildings and grounds by and in the City of Cape May, County of Cape May, State of New Jersey, appropriating $2,200,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,95,238 of bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof with a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 553? This is the bond ordinance. Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, counsel? I'll make a quick comment. Just a reminder to the public that we've actually had a, probably why there isn't much public comment, is we've had several presentations on this ordinance, and all of council has really been supportive of MAC, as MAC has been supportive of the City of Cape May for years. And maybe a little bit outside of the ordinance, but I was, I have a meeting this week with Senator Kim in regards to our promenade and the big FEMA funding that we're hopefully getting. And in preparation for that meeting, I was doing a little research on our beaches and beach erosion, and I came across John Bailey's, rest in peace, he did an eight-minute video on the history of Cape May, and it's on YouTube. It's only eight minutes. It's a wonderful reminder, and it makes you proud to be sitting at this table. You remember the history of the City of Cape May. But in that video, it, you know, it goes, it actually goes back to 18,000 years ago, like a prehistoric portion in the first couple of seconds, and then it gets into more modern history in the 1700s, the 1800s, and then closer to today. And talks about in 1976, MAC, '76, right? I think MAC is formed and, of course, saves the physic estate. And then goes further, and then there's this young couple that's opening a bed and breakfast that named Tom and Sue Carroll, and then it goes further and further into the history. But.
Still young.
Watching that this morning just reminded me that, you know, this is a little bit a part of history is in helping preserve the physic estate. And, you know, what could have happened in the City of Cape May and what didn't happen because people stepped up. And I think this is a step in the right direction, and really, MAC could not be a better partner for the city, especially because they're willing to pay us for this bond, and we'll be paying that and fixing up a city property, but couldn't find a better steward of the building. And so we thank you very much. Anyone else want to say anything on this bond? Okay, yeah. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulock?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Mr. Mayor, should we? Resolution?
Mr. Meyer, did you want to say that?
Should we do the resolution next, since everybody's here?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Good, good point. Yep.
We are looking at.
I agree.
I agree.
Sure.
Okay, let's go out of order for just a moment and go to our resolutions, Resolution 130, is that good?
Sure, sure, counsel. We have Resolution 130-03, 2025, Resolution authorizing a non-binding letter of intent with the Mid-Atlantic Center for the Arts, a New Jersey nonprofit for bond and reimbursement plan to fund improvements to the city-owned property known as the Emlyn physic estate.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, counsel?
Do you mind if I have our solicitor discuss the non-binding, when it's going to actually turn to binding?
Yeah, the, it's, this is a companion to the bond ordinance, whether it was obvious or not, but it's the, it's a non-binding letter of intent with MAC. And the reason it's characterized as non-binding is because we're going to have to, the repayment terms are not going to be finalized until we actually have a bond sale. So, we approve the bond tonight, it'll be, you know, 20 days from final passage, and then, that's not the actual sale, though, as everybody at the table knows. So, what we'll do, the city will end up doing is bundling this amount with probably some other bonds that we've authorized in the past, and probably sometime in mid-'25, Kevin, like we've done before, get the rate, do a closing, and at that time, we'll have an idea, a better picture of what those repayment terms will look like, and that will form the basis of a final loan agreement, which we will coordinate with MAC. So, before any money goes out the door, the both parties, we're gonna, are gonna coordinate on what the repayment terms will be, and we'll have a final picture of that when the actual bond sale happens. So, but what we wanted to do is get ahead of that, and their counsel is here, and we wanted to flush out and get the essential terms of that loan agreement incorporated in this letter of intent. So, we've done a lot of the substantive provisions that we were looking for are in this letter of intent, and then we'll be able to finalize the financing terms once that sale occurs. So, there's a couple dominoes that have to fall, and that's why it was characterized as non-binding.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And moving on, counsel, to the public portion on resolutions only.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions this evening? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I have a question about Resolution 12203. It's about the roof repair for Convention Hall. I guess my question is, I've always been told a metal roof lasts for a long time. I didn't understand why we're, this is being repaired already, when the Convention Hall, we're still paying on the loan for the Convention Hall.
It's due to a leak, but you, do you want to?
Sure, I can elaborate further, or if you'd like, I can have Eric Przynski, who happens to be here as well. Yeah, why don't you come on up?
Because, you know, is that something that maybe we should go back to the people that installed it, if it's leaking?
So, basically, just by way of introduction for it, is there is a leak, and it's kind of at its life term of the usefulness of it, and-
And what is that, the life term?
Repair. The warranty on the roof was a 10-year warranty.
A metal roof?
The metal roof, yes. We had a company come out that installed it from the original, did the warranty repair. The warranty repair didn't hold up, and it's due for the amount of water that it's catching inside the gutter system, that the gutters are located inside the building, there's not, the rooms not, the gutters aren't built big enough to hold the flow of water, which is causing the gutter to overload the building.
So, are we changing the gutters, then?
Yes. So, the gutters are going to be extended to a six-inch gutter, right now, it's a three-inch gutter. It's going to be extended to a six-inch gutter with also replacing the roof as well, because you got to take the roof off to do the gutter work, because the gutters built into the roof system.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, my other question has to do with Resolution 12303, having to do with the preservation grant, and it says encouraging small businesses to create in mixed neighborhoods. Is there a certain area that this is targeting? Because I think in the past, it was this area out here where Franklin Street and the Acme was one of the preservation grants. I don't know if that's the same area, or if this is for all of Cape May.
I believe it's the same location.
Same location.
Yeah.
So, it's just, just one location again? We're not expanding that location at all?
No, same location.
Is there a reason why we're not expanding it, and we're just staying with the same area, that we keep giving them the opportunity for money and not expanding it?
So, city manager Dietrich has looked into this, had a conversation with Mr. Rotella, who is one of our grand consultants, on this, and there's still work that needs to be done in that portion of the city. As we know, there has been extensive work that has already been going on out there, but it's been highlighted in numerous magazines, articles, newspapers, and we felt that it was best to continue with the efforts of that for this time.
So, the small businesses, from what I understand, would only be here at the Acme parking lot. Those businesses are the only ones that are included? Because Franklin Street, there, there's one home, and I guess the old Methodist Church is a condo, and the city owns Franklin Street School, so I don't own any businesses there. So, are we just keep giving money to the Acme area? Is that what it comes down to?
It's in the same parameters.
I don't think, I don't think that's what it's going to.
No. Franklin Street.
Yeah.
No businesses on Franklin Street, that's my point.
So, I don't know the answer to this, I mean, I just don't know the answer to, but I believe the reason that we're receiving the grant is the projects in that area. So, I'm not positive of that offhand, but we can get the answer to you for sure.
Right, because it seems like it's looking to, you know, expand mixed use with businesses. And to me, the only business would, that, well, sturdy savings bank, I don't think you would consider the Harriet Tubman Museum a business, or are you considering that a business? And-
I'm under the impression it's not just for the use of businesses.
No.
Well, the grant, the grant's saying that they're trying to get people to mix use of businesses, that's why.
Well, and community investment, too.
I think so. It has more application than just that, and I think this is something that we go out for almost every year, if I'm, if I'm-
I just, I don't understand why we're not expanding the area. We're keep giving the same money to the same area, instead of expanding it to different areas.
I don't know whether or not, if we're saying, it might be on the other, it might be within the Acme area onto the other side versus Franklin, but I don't know without, with having, Mr. Rotella would be able to-
Yeah, I mean, before, it was only the Acme area, because I think they, I think, hold me if I'm wrong, but I think the money was given to the Acme for their improvements.
I'm pretty sure that was under a COVID program at that time, but I don't, I don't-
I just said, I'm not sure.
This continues, this continues a lot of the work that we've been doing on the Franklin Street area.
So, then my, then my question is, is it just really for the city to benefit? That's all I'm asking.
And this is, just to note, this is for an application.
So, we have an opportunity to still get-
Okay, because it was, from what I was reading from this resolution, it was saying small businesses, and I wouldn't consider the city to be the business.
Well, it's saying neighborhood preservation program, so without really understanding what, how that is defined in the grant application, it's kind of hard for us to just guess at this point. So, right now, it's just saying that we're applying, so I think we should be asking for Mr. Rotella to-
Yeah, because I think if you read that, it says applicants in the neighborhood, in the neighborhoods. So, to me, applicants is not the city, it's people that are in that neighborhood.
This is to benefit, the city is the recipient of this.
Okay, that's fine, because I didn't really read that way.
I think that's just the wording every year of the, but the city is the recipient.
Yeah, it's not for, it's not for money to go to small businesses, it's to encourage small business job creation, invite greater business and community investment in economic development, so I think it's kind of like, let's-
The broader applicant-
Why I ask this is because in the past, there have been grants out there where people in the community could come to that and get the money.
And Miss Sheen, that's not what this is for. This is, as Mr. Gillen Schwartz expanded upon, is for economic development and the spur of. The city has identified that the Franklin Street area is one of those areas in the city that we want to apply these funds for, if we're successful. As I noted, it was in the newspaper, in, featured in numerous historic preservation magazines, we just got an award, and was featured in one of the national magazines for the Franklin Street School, so that's what this is for.
Okay, that's fine, thank you for your clarification.
You're welcome.
My last question has to do with Resolution 134, that talks about seeking funding for windows and brick mortar. Well, when I was on council, I know it was, Mr. Mullick's, one of his first things he did was have the building repointed, and the windows flashing fixed, and I thought all that leaking was, was dealt with, and I was surprised to see this on there again, with the fact that I thought we already took care of those issues.
So, Mayor, if you'd like.
So, and it did, but some time has passed on-
Well, it's only been about three years.
You're right, but this is, this is a resolution authorizing for a county grant, historic preservation of City Hall.
Well, it specifically talks about windows and brick mortar. So, that's why, my point is, if we just did this less than five years ago, and there's leaks, then we should be bringing the person back that did this, and say they didn't do the work correctly.
I don't disagree with you, some of that should have happened, and I'm not saying it's not, but some of these were windows that apparently weren't done in that portion, so just authorizing us to go to the county and seek-
Okay, I just, I just look at it as we're redoing work that was already done, and if it wasn't done to-
I don't believe it's the same work.
Okay, because if it wasn't done to the proper caliber, then we should hold workers accountable for work being done.
I agree with you, and I will make sure that that's the case, but I believe that a large portion of this was things that weren't done yet.
And evidently, it's listed that there was someone who conducted a needs assessment, an architect, so I would presume there's a report that substantiates the need.
Well, the person that did a needs assessment might not know that we just did it four years ago, and that this person should come back and-
So, with all that being said, this resolution is for us to go seek the grant funding. I understand what you're saying. We did pull a resolution this evening that was basically us looking at, okay, this is how much it would cost for that work to be done, and we have gone back and potentially maybe identified a funding source that would be able to help us in that capacity.
And I realize that, yeah.
And I agree with you, that if a contractor has not performed up to their duties or their obligations to the city, I'm going to be the first one that's going to call them up and say, hey, you better-
Right.
But, but, let me just finish here. But unfortunately, that project that you're speaking about has been closed out. Not all of that work that was, that we're talking about was included in that, though.
Okay, because the only reason why I'm bringing it up, because you were not here, and I think there was only one person on council that was here, that may have not realized that this work was completed, and that that's why, you know, we should not be redoing work. Because sometimes when councils are, there's turnover on council and everything, people don't know there was actually work done before they came on to council, and that work was, should have been looked at and completed properly.
Sure, and I can appreciate that.
And, Ms. Sheen, just to follow up, that's part of the reason why 121 was pulled, okay, because there was work done, but I understand that there are windows, and you're looking at repointing around the windows, were you disturbing certain things? We need to get a little bit more clarification on that, but this is really just going out for that grant.
From my understanding, the whole building was repointed.
It was, but now we're looking at redoing windows, so there are some things, when the needs assessment was completed, there were things that were going to have to be done as far as repointing in areas that were going to be disturbed, or, and other areas where there has been other work done on this building since the lightning strike, like, things like that. So, there have been other things. So, this was looking at that in that lens, if you can understand that. And then, you know, and then redoing, the bulk of it, I think, was the windows, but we need to get clarification on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Yep.
Jules Rausch, 10th New York Avenue. I know the Resolution 121 was tabled, but I'd like, I'd like to ask more of a general question. When, when we have a project, as an example, in 121, do we get an outside quotation or a review, or do we just accept using the, the state program of purchasing?
State contract.
The state contract.
Pardon me, state contract. Yeah, I think specifically for this one, I think it should go out to bid, which is-
That's my question.
It all depends on the project, Mr. Rausch. It all depends on the project, and, you know, evaluating it within our internal staff. We have a conversation with our qualified purchasing agent as well, and then we come to the, kind of that agreement, either, A, we should take this out to bid, or it's worth that effort to do that, or B, we'll utilize the state cooperative pricing system, which essentially, just for the public, they understand, the state already went out to bid for that contractor and obtained that pricing.
Yeah, because I think at some point-
So, they both go out to bid.
We need to have an evaluation of, is that a fair price that we're getting? And is there someone else that can give us something maybe a little better?
I agree with you, agree with you, and because some of the state contract stuff is good, some of it's just okay, I mean, but I think the deputy city manager's point is that that state contract did go out to bid, those numbers are under that bid, and we have the availability to use that, which is, which is obviously a good thing to have that option. Getting other quotes and taking a look at something that's, could be close to 300,000, believe me, I agree.
Great, thank you. And 135, that's a resolution approving emergency temporary budget appropriation. Is that, are there specific items, or is that more or less to pay bills?
Go ahead, Kevin.
That's just to pay bills. Each year, the temporary budget is set at 26.25% of the prior year's budget, to cover the first quarter of the year. However, each year, the state pushes out the budget adoption timeline further than that, so this is just to cover any bills that come up in that period.
And I know it's not, it's not one of the resolutions, but I hope we have the opportunity for a little discussion this evening about the recycling, so that there's a little more effort for the public to describe what they, their concerns are. Thank you.
Please. Anyone else on resolutions this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry. Would anyone like to remove? I don't want to, I don't want to take the city clerk's-
Okay. Is there anything counsel would like to remove from the consent agenda this evening, recognizing that we already removed 121 and acted on 130?
Is there something that you wanted to remove? Okay, okay.
And with the acknowledgement, that Councilmember Bodnar will be abstaining from the minutes.
Okay.
All good?
Do I, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
I abstain on the minutes and vote yes on the resolutions.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
And Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, on to new business. City Solicitor, any new business?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
None tonight, Mayor.
City Clerk?
Just a few. I did want to report that mercantile license renewal invoices were emailed out on March 6th, so if anybody from the public has not received them yet, please check your junk email, it would have come from a licensing@capemaycity email address. If you have not received it, please reach out to my office, and we can resend it to If you have not received it, please reach out to my office, and we can resend it to you. All right, you have the option of paying online. You do not need to pay online, you're more than welcome to print that out and bring it into the office, the invoice, with all of the required paperwork. Everybody needs an updated proof of insurance, that is a state requirement, and there are certain other required documents, depending on the kind of mercantile classification you hold. So, please reach out to my office if you haven't seen it yet, if you're having trouble accessing it, and we will find another way of getting it to you, okay?
City Clerk, I do want to thank you and staff for getting that credit card payment option all together, it was, I know a lot of people.
Our pleasure. It was, it was some work, but, I mean, pretty smooth so far, we're only a couple weeks in. And additionally, we are hosting a job fair at the convention hall on Wednesday, May 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you're interested in attending, everybody more the merrier, please bring your resume, be ready to interview on the spot. If you're interested in being a vendor, please reach out to the Cape May Convention Hall staff, you can call 884-9563, and they can set you up with being a vendor, so please come on out to our job fair.
Great.
That's it, council.
Council members, let's see, Councilwoman Baldwin.
Just two quick things, Mayor. The mayor gave a wonderful blessing of the waters before the polar bear plunge at Cory's. No, but that, in all, in all seriousness, and he went in in his suit, but no, in all seriousness, that, that was a wonderful event, it helped the food closet, and Next Gen 30.
That's great.
So, they really did a wonderful job, and I think you ran in it, too.
I did, yeah, yeah.
Good job.
No polar plunge for me, though.
And then, just a reminder, singer-songwriter has not been here since way pre-COVID. They're going to be here March 28th and March 29th, and it's, it'll be all across town, it'll be a really nice event.
Yeah, I saw that there's a lot of new places that have added.
Yes.
So that's exciting.
Really cool.
And that's all, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bodnar?
Look, we had another crazy rainstorm this week, it was raining really, really hard. I know, I would say this, Eric and Frank, I saw Public Works out there clearing the storm drains, thank you very much, I know your staff is out there working really hard, so when I had a chance to see them on the street, I thanked them, very grateful, I know, for your staff being out there. Just a reminder to residents who have a storm drain in front of your house, if you see it's starting to back up, and the, the, the road's starting to fill up with water, help us, help out your neighbors, help out yourself, just clear the debris away from that drain as you're clearing up your yard.
That's what I do, right, guys?
Deputy Mayor?
I just, we passed the resolution tonight to engage with Deckert on the short-term rentals, so very happy to see that, and I, I know it may be a little bit premature, but would like just to know when we're going to be kicking that off. I know that they had talked about a 30-day implementation, so really excited for us to get that online, so I don't know.
We have access to the software, and this is, this is for basically ensuring compliance, we're able to view all listings, they are able to provide the service where you can see if some, if a property is listed without a mercantile license. So, I begged Paul to let us get through some mercantile renewals first, and then we'll start, you know, learning, learning the program. It seems pretty user-friendly, and once we get through mercantile renewals, then we will switch gears and look more towards trying to round up the stragglers.
Awesome, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Councilman Meyer?
The only thing that's on my mind right now, I just hope that everybody can participate with me in having hopes and prayers for the astronauts to come home tomorrow, finally. I think it's a really big day in American history, and it's something.
Last day of landing.
They did?
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's great news.
That's cool.
Probably a very wobbly legs.
I just think that's, it's been very fascinating for me, it's something new in our space history, and I just think, you know, God bless those folks for doing what they did with help, with professionalism and courage.
Cool. So I have an announcement for the Mayor's Wellness Campaign. Cape May City will be participating in the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, which is a statewide initiative aimed at helping residents live healthier lives. As part of this campaign, we will be scheduling and hosting Cape May City Walk and Talks. So myself and other council members, I hope you've heard this before now, along with the representative from administration, other department heads, will help, will join residents for community neighborhood walks. So these walks are obviously an excellent opportunity for us to get together and have a conversation, hear any thoughts, ideas, comments, and, and actually get some exercise at the same time, we can get out of the office, which is great, and not be on email, too, so. So look, look forward to announcements for upcoming dates, and I know Deputy City Manager will be asking all the council members for dates that you may have available for a nice little walk, and hear from our residents, so it'll be kind of nice. With that, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any topic this evening, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and we'd be, thank you.
Jules Rausch, 1010 New York Avenue. I'd like to just make a few comments about the recycling. That program worked extremely well for years, and then in 2017, it changed. Changed without any, any real motivation, it just, it just, it happened. When you have a business, you have expenses and you have revenue. If you have a business, you're responsible for your expenses, whether it's a car dealership, or a bed and breakfast, or a rental property. You have that obligation to pay for your expenses. The taxpayer should not be required to pay for the expenses for someone that is earning a profit, from whether it's a business, or a particular item, or a service that they're earning. So we have a mercantile license, and that system worked very, very well, and with this new additional program we have, I think we'll probably get somewhere close between, between 95 and 100% of anyone that is, that is in an activity, is going to have a mercantile license. For years, the mercantile license was the key, and I think that should be the key. If you have a mercantile license, you're in business, you should pay for your own recyclables. That collection is based on what you do, and the opportunity that you're, you're offering. It should not be a taxpayer's liability. The unfortunate thing is, in the city, we now have an issue that's really difficult to solve, because we've gotten, we've gotten lazy, and we've gotten into some programs that we frankly should not be in. And I look at, at the cost, the cost to run these recycling, whether it's recycling or whether it's trash collection, these, these pieces of equipment are expensive. They're expensive to purchase, they're expensive to maintain, and when you take a small community, community like Cape May, and you burden it with an excessive amount of recycling material to be selected, that equipment is going to, is going to wear out quickly. And I think it's unfair to ask our public employees to take that equipment, and then have to pick up some of these trash cans that are poorly placed, the burden that we, that they have is significant. We've, we've had a number of workman's comp cases in the past, we're going to, the way you have it set up right now with this proposal under 555, is there's going to be a significant increase in the amount of material that, that you're asking the Public Works Department to collect. I don't think it's fair for them, I don't think it's fair for the taxpayer to have to bear that burden, and it's not a difficult thing. Go back to where we were, the ordinance that is in place, it worked, and I see, think it should continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rausch. Anyone else this evening? Mr. Haus?
I'm asking about the recycle, Stacy Sheen, 928 Columbia Avenue. The recycling, I guess I need some clarification, because it wasn't really stated in the paperwork for the ordinance. How many containers are, is a business allowed to have?
There's the.
Well, the examples don't, but there's examples, but they don't actually state how many a business is allowed to have. That's why I'm asking.
So, a commercial property gets an allocation of basically equivalent to 496-gallon cans.
Okay.
Now, if there's multiple units on that site, like, let's say that there's a commercial unit on the bottom, and then there's two residential on top, or something like that, then you would get potentially six. Let's say that there's four total units up there, or, or three up top and one commercial on the bottom, you, you can't go beyond six.
Now, when, my question is with this, right? So, there's a place above a business, and they decided to take a three-bedroom, make it all three one-bedrooms. They each get one?
No. I mean, it, you get whatever's permitted on that site, so like, you have to have, you know, permitted use, you have a commercial unit on the bottom, it's a mixed-use permitted building, and then you look at the number of units, and then you can go up to six.
Okay, now, and this includes restaurants?
Yes.
So, restaurants that have a liquor license, they're making money on that, get to put out the recycling, but only four cans?
Correct.
Okay. Motels?
Four cans.
Four cans. A bed and breakfast or anything, four cans. Now, like, a bed and breakfast, is that considered just one unit?
It would be, it would be considered a.
Just four units.
It would be considered like a hotel, so you'd get four units.
Four units, okay, okay. Thank you for your clarification, I was getting. My one question has to do with, did the library get hit by lightning the other night?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, just saying.
It may have, I just don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. Not that I'm aware.
Is this library here?
Yeah.
They have a fire alarm.
Frank, can you just?
They had a fire alarm over there a couple nights ago, while the lights fell down on the main power lines, the alarms were going off two nights ago, I do know that, but as far as I know, there was no lightning strike there, as far as.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was a lightning strike, or power surge, whatever.
They had a power surge, because the light out back fell on top of the main, the main lines out back.
Okay.
From the wind, and from the wind.
From the wind, okay.
Wind, yes, Sunday night, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just so the public is aware, Mr. McCleskey is one of our Public Works supervisors, and also is one of our deputy OEM coordinators.
My other question has to do with the work that they're doing on the, the boardwalk down by the cove. Are they removing benches at this point, or not yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I wasn't sure if they were at that point. My last question, or is not really a question, I just wanted to do a shout-out that the blessing of the waters for the Fisher Memorial is going to be on April 5th, Saturday at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you for that. Anyone else from the public?
Trish Darnaby, 719, 721 Franklin Street. I have a question about the recycling. I, I don't have like a 96-gallon can, so I put out like, I guess, a 32-gallon cans, and I put like three out sometimes, sometimes two, and I, and I have to give a shout-out to Public Works. Any chance I get, I have to say, you people are absolutely phenomenal, and I always say hello to them, and thank you for being there all the time, and thank you for all the work you do in the city. You do a fabulous job.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
And I want to tell you, my recycling has not been picked up today, but that's okay, it has nothing to do with, no, seriously, it's a tough, and I, I talk to Edie quite a lot, we've become close friends, because I know there's an issue on my street, on Franklin Street, picking up my recycling, but it's, it's not a problem, they always pick it up, but I am concerned about the cans, you know, like, I threw cans out there.
So, to jump, to jump into the, to answer the question about the 96-gallon can, again, myself, Frank, Ms. McDade, Mr. Meyer, and our Solicitor have worked, so that's where in the parentheses of the, the, the ordinance, we put in one 96-gallon can, or two 96-gallon cans, or give you an equal to amount of a gallon, so three 32-gallon cans comes out to a 96-gallon can.
Okay.
So you would, your three cans would be picked up.
Right, they would be picked up.
Correct.
Yeah, I just want to check, because three cans, you know, you see three cans, and I just want to check. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you again, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you. Better hurry.
Bernie Haus, 1069 Michigan Avenue. I just want to extend my gratitude for having gotten that yellow bathroom off Beach Avenue. I complained about that 10 years ago, when it was first constructed, if that's the right word, and now that it's gone, it took, it took you guys to do it, because I complained about it to many other council people, and it only happened here because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you, Bernie.
Yeah, thank you.